Go ahead, my commissioner.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners' date at March 13th, 2025, and reading as follows: "The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, Dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk." Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. And, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our law enforcement. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Get right on to number five, approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, County Board minutes of 3:425 and 3:1125, and committee of the whole on 3:1325. Do you want to do all of them at once?
You can.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll support.
Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
On the motion for 3:11, it was agenda item number three. It was the FOIA Appeal 25-18 fees. It states that it was to emit 182 emails out of the chain, as well as the digital collection, bringing the estimate charge to $755.54. The amount doesn't calculate correctly. The $755.54 is just 182. So I would recommend changing that amount.
So I would amend my motion, then, to, can we just remove the file amount, and then you can calculate what it needs to be, and that keeps it a little bit more clear?
Yes.
Okay, so...
And then I would just want to add to, Commissioner Van Genhoven brought to our attention that some of her emails were already FOIA'd. And so we need to remove those as well in the estimate, so that would be 59 more emails, so...
Okay, so by removing the amount, it gives you the flexibility to come up with that final amount without being restricted?
Yeah, so, but it states 182 emails in there still. Do you want to remove that as well?
Because you're going to be adding 59, right?
Correct. So the new total will be 241.
That was a separate time, though. That wasn't at the same meeting.
No, it was not. This is after the fact.
Okay.
So do you have a total, then?
It'd be 241 emails.
But it would only be 182 per the meeting. So that part is correct. It's just the amount that's incorrect. You were just letting them know about the extra or extra emails right now.
So we would leave the 182?
182.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I would amend my motion to correct the meeting minutes from 3:1125 under the FOIA appeal to remove the dollar amount to allow for the flexibility of recalculating.
Thank you.
And I'll still support.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. We will move on to approval of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
It's like we have some new stuff to add. Don't have that in front of me, though.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, including added items, which would be number...
Nine.
Nine. Resignation of C. Potier and request for lump sum payout and fill corrections position. And then number 10, resignation of S. Weary, request for lump sum payout and to fill park manager position. I'm not comfortable adding the upco easement just because it came in so late. I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Do you mind adding it, and then we can discuss it, at least? Can we do that?
I would appreciate that as well, because I don't think we're going to necessarily pass it tonight, but I would like to discuss it.
Can we specify for discussion only?
That's fine. If it doesn't get a second, it doesn't get a second, or if we just discuss without a motion. That's up to the chair.
Do we have a second?
I would, yeah, I just did nine and 10.
Yeah.
So your motion would be... Well, I have a motion on the floor.
She's got a motion on the floor, so we have to...
My apologies.
If it doesn't get a second, then it goes.
I would, I'll second the adding nine and 10. Anything else? Okay. Should we move the closed session to, otherwise, we're going to have a closed session in between?
Oh, it won't be long, I don't think. I don't anticipate it being...
Okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay. So we have a motion to add nine and 10?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Any more discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Yeah, it's got to be unanimous.
Oh.
Twist my arm.
I'll make a motion that we also add 11, and encourage discussion only.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have discussion? I'm sorry. I just, this is, this is a point that I've made in the past multiple times, that I do not like to put things on the agenda last minute when I haven't had time to review the information. So I just want to ensure that there's going to be no vote on this.
I will say I have no plan on voting on it.
Okay. All right, go ahead, John. Sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Okay. Now, we've got the agenda. We go to number seven, presentation of written communications received and forward. There is none?
No.
Number eight, reports of standing statutory special committee meetings and others?
None.
None. Public comment on agenda items. Anybody on public comment on agenda items?
And there's none. There's none for remote either.
Public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Administrator report.
Good evening, Commissioners. A couple updates. One is the UP State Fair Authority Trust Fund grant. Myself and the UP State Fair management team received notice that the DNR trust fund did not, decided not to approve the extension request. Therefore, the grant is past its deadline. After the many obstacles that challenged this project, which both UP State Fair and Delta County overcame, including the pandemic, numerous staff turnovers in both entities, and changes in service providers, dynamic design assisted recently creating a timeline that would have had the project completed around October, November of '25. I also want to note that the UP State Fair Authority is still interested in pursuing the completion of this project in the future, and also to acknowledge the Park Commission that they've become a very active board comprised of diverse representatives, and they're currently undertaking the comprehensive review and update of the five-year rec plan. So this should demonstrate our commitment to enhancing recreational opportunities for our community. Delta County Veterans Affairs, just to identify that we sent out all the notices to the veteran service organizations throughout Delta County, and then also to the daily press. So that is moving forward. I also want to bring to everybody's attention that through conversations that I've had recently with individuals in our community, there seems to be a misunderstanding between the Delta County Veterans Affairs Committee that we created recently and the Delta County Veterans Council. Those are two separate entities. The Veterans Council is a nonprofit. So I just, I just wanted to point it out in case others were having questions about that. Also, rereading the Public Act 192 of 1953, we made a motion, or the Commission made a motion, to have a hiring committee created. But according to the Act, that is up to the Veterans Affairs Committee, is to do the hiring for all the staffing individuals. But as the Board of Commissioners, you approve the budget and such, which, you know, you guys work hand in hand. Delta County Airport update, we have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for March 31st at 1:00 PM. The Chair, Brian Hero, has volunteered to attend that pre-meeting in my stead, for me. So that was, thank you, Brian. Delta County Master Plan, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Amy, has contacted me and is working with other staff within the building and zoning and administration to send out the intent to plan to several of the planning commissions throughout Delta County and adjacent, and then also the municipalities if they don't have a planning commission. Finally, the opioid task force, RFP. So I just want to acknowledge that the deadline is fast approaching, March 31st. I have received two ca applications thus far. I received a question recently from an organization that I believe is some valuable information to pass along to the community. The current grant period is shorter than the typical 12-month grant period cycle, and this is just due to aligning the period end date to the county's fiscal year-end. In the future, I believe that the grant period will be a 12 months, so it'll be a full year. A lot of, we're asking if it was going to be six months throughout. So I just want to identify that just for this year, it's a shorter period, but we'll have the 12 months, so just to plan accordingly, and this will be an annual until the funds run out. So. And then also, it's pointed notice that one of the questions was, do the costs have to occur in the grant period? And I, you know, identified yes, so in case anybody else had any questions about that. And that's it.
Can I get a motion to put Administrator's report on file?
So moved? Support.
Any discussion?
Yep, I just have one question. With the hiring committee, do we need to rescind that motion? Because it's not...
I mean, it's just not, you can rescind it. It wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I guess I look at it as the Public Act would be the superior authority, so we would have to follow that.
I'm just looking for a recommendation. Do you think we need to rescind?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So do you want to get a motion to rescind?
Well, we're just, we already had a motion and support for the...
Okay.
I can rescind my motion to place Administrator's report on file.
We have a motion and a support to...
I know, he just said he would rescind his motion to take the Administrator's report on.
I apologize, Pat. Thank you.
And I'll support.
Okay.
So then I will make a motion that we now rescind our, our forming of the hiring committee for the Veterans Affairs.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Can we just have a quick discussion on that? I just want to note that I am not comfortable with all this rescinding of previous motions. I understand we need to do this in this particular case, but I don't like this type of, I just don't like to see this kind of activity in a board, having to rescind votes like this. So I just want to note that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass.
So I'll make a motion to place Administrator's report on file.
Can I get support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Okay. Building and Grounds Committee, minutes of 3:725.
So I'm Chair of that Board. Commissioner Melner and I met and with Administrator Young, and we discussed multiple things. We discussed Michigan Works lease. It's due for renewal. Michigan Works, as you know, is preparing for some deep federal cuts, and as a way to kind of help with that, the county, or the, the Building and Grounds Committee would like to recommend that we have this boardroom right here, our conference room, that we start taking that over as our space, instead of Michigan Works having that as their space. It would actually become our space, and we would have access to it. We would also have access to this room. We would control this calendar instead of having to go to Michigan Works. I spoke to Deb Brunel, who is the CEO of Michigan Works, and she seems like she would like to work towards that goal. It seems very, it works with what Michigan Works is doing. Next, we had the courthouse security policy. There were no changes, and so the Building and Grounds suggested that we push it to the full board for approval. Moving on past that, the Circuit Court remodel is going as it should be. There was no action taken. The airport training, or the airport TSA training room, the TSA's been using their training room for a while. They haven't been charged rent for that area. It just kind of got absorbed. So Building and Grounds would like to push that to modifying the training room, and it'll be up to finance to set the rent. And when the training room gets remodeled, that will be a reimbursable expense.
Can I get a motion to put the Building and Grounds Committee on file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Number three, Finance Committee, minutes of 3:1025.
So myself, Commissioner Williams, and Administrator Young met on 3:10. One of the items you'll see on there, which is number three, we'll actually address here as a full board, which is item six. There were three other items of note. One of them goes back to the TSA room, so we'll hit that one first. And that goes back to one, the lease, and that, and obviously it deals, sorry, with, with GSA, and what standards they need to be able to use as a training room. And as was pointed out, those will actually be reimbursable, in this case by TSA, for bringing it up to the standards they need for a training room. So that would be no cost to the county after. The other one was for the cost allocation plan. Let's point out, we really needed to have an RFP for our cost allocation plan. And then the one that's been worked on here for a little bit, it was for what our liability is for both leave time and occurrence sick leave for non-union employees. And one of the things that came out is the format that it was in. We needed a lot, a little better clarification before we can move forward and figure out what that liability would be.
Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Departmental updates. Any departmental heads here? Any want? No? Okay. None. We will move on to, there is no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business, payment of bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, $529,420.65. Commissioner expenses, $463.
Motion to pay our bills.
Okay. Can I get support?
I'll support.
Any discussion on this? I need a roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes.
Bills are paid. And we will, as soon as I can get this thing moving, on to number two, MIDC lead attorney contract, Mackey Law, PLLC.
This is a request to ratify the contract for Delta County's new lead attorney of the MIDC program. The terms of the contract has not changed, except for the name and associated information.
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a couple of small things here. Can, can we look at, hold on here. Why, okay, so under section three, compensation, it's item B. It says the attorney is responsible for his or her own costs and business-related expenses, such as mileage, phone calls, copying expenses. But then yet, at the end, which was section four B, it talks about reimbursement for travel. Is that not conflicting, or am I just misunderstanding it?
So the first mention of mileage is just to and from the courthouse. We do at times have out-of-town attorneys that have to travel in to Delta County, so we reimburse for that.
Okay, so it's just a different type of travel?
Correct.
It's just, okay, it's not, it just was confusing to me when I read it. So, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Number three, flexible benefit plan document restatement and resolution.
Attached in your packet is the adoption agreement for the plan, flex spending master plan, and a summary plan description, along with the resolution and consent of adoption. I'm requesting that the Board adopt the reinstatement of the previously adopted plan. There were no changes.
Motion? So moved?
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Number four, interlocal agreement for deputy, deputy, oh, boy.
Debutization.
Yes, thank you. I can't get it out. Mutual law enforcement. And that is for, assisted for Hannibal Indian Tribe of Michigan. Sheriff talked to me, this hasn't been updated in 20 years. So this is the first update in 20 years, so...
Motion to authorize the Chair to sign?
Second?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one, one, a couple of things, actually. Under the definitions, which is item eight, there's no definition of BOLO, which I'm assuming is beyond the lookout. But BOLO is used in item E, under section, under the agreement section. So I felt it would be important to define that acronym, since it is a part of the agreement. And then there is some formatting, just some weird formatting things. I don't know if you care or not, but, like, there's some big chunks where there's, like, returns or something. I don't mind one way or another if they're still in there, but I could give it to Ashley, and she could maybe relay that to get it cleaned up maybe in the future. Just small things.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Number five, Administration courthouse security policy.
Administration is requesting that the Board adopt the courthouse security policy. This policy was a collaborative effort between the Sheriff's Department, the trial courts, along with the prosecutor and attorney in my office.
Motion to approve? Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have one big thing, and I'll go through that first. Under section four, screening tip, or screening steps, I believe it should read section three, not section two, in all the places that it reads section two. So for instance, on number one, individual subject to screening process outlined in section two, but the screening process is section three. So if someone can look at that and clarify that for me, but I think those should all read section three.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, so that, I think that needs to be changed. And then there's, I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to go to something else real quick here. Let me find it. It's the last, it's on the last page, number six, consequences of violating this, and it says will be the revoke, revocation of, and it uses the word there, as in T-H-E-I-R. I think that should be specified, the employees. And the front entrance should be the public entrance, just being clear as to what those are. Those are just ambiguous to me, so. Otherwise, I think everything else is fine. There's some, again, some little small formatting things, which I could just give you, Ashley. I don't think they make any difference, but they're just small formatting things.
I'd like to amend my motion to include Commissioner Williams' amendments.
Did I support it?
Yes.
I support that again, yeah.
Discussion?
Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Okay, number six, Veterans Affairs, interim director appointment.
The Finance Committee reviewed the additional compensation for the appointment made by the Board of Commissioners. The Committee recommends to provide the interim director $100 per request for the veterans' emergency relief requests, to review and process, as this is additional duties that is required by the Commission, by giving him the appointment.
Can I add to that real quick, just how we arrived at that?
Yeah.
So we had actually looked at, and I'm trying to remember exactly, but I think we had looked at, previously, it would have been the Board who did that work, and we looked at what they would have been compensated to do that work, and we used that amount that the county would have spent to have the Committee do the work, to then have an individual do the work. So that's how we arrived at that amount.
Get a motion?
A motion to approve, to approve the interim director appointment amount of $100 per request for emergency services.
Support. Any discussion?
I do. Is that the only additional job duty he has, as being the interim?
As far as I'm aware.
Okay. I thought we had discussed at the last meeting that he was going to be writing policy as well.
I don't, I think we thought that was going to be the Veterans Committee.
That's going to be the Committee.
Yeah, the Committee's supposed to be, yeah, and doing the hiring.
Because we had to discuss that in finance, too.
Yeah, did we? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was just doing the emergency. And I believe that when we had the discussion at the Commission, we were talking about those duties. Well, you might be, that's what you're probably suggesting, is that we talked about more. I don't, I don't recall that we did, but the only duties he will be doing extra would be the emergency relief, determining whether someone's going to get emergency relief.
Okay, so he's the interim director, but the job scope of the interim director does not apply yet because we, we only okayed him to do the emergency services?
Well, I think the only person who can do that work is the interim. I don't think the VSO, I don't know. That's a good question. It's a good question.
Because I, I, and maybe I'm incorrect in this, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but my feeling was when we made him the interim director, that he was handling the duties of the interim director for the 30 days until the Commission could be appointed, and then they can start the selection for, and do the emergency relief. But... and then they can start the selection for, and do the emergency relief. But it was my assumption that he was going to be doing the duties of the director, not just the emergency.
I believe, I thought the discussion was that it was for the emergency relief. That's why we were making him-
Yeah, it, it is for the emergency relief, but I don't know, something is sticking out in my head about him having to write policy.
And that might have been part of the discussion, but it is the, when you read the veterans committee, the law, they're really in charge of creating policy, they're in charge of hiring. So, I think we did make several sort of assumptions-
Okay.
-that aren't really valid, because-
Okay.
-we, I don't think we fully understood the law, so.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I think we were also talking about what criteria to approve the, the requests that were in applying the, currently, the soldiers and sailors relief to the county, so allowing him to use those.
Yeah.
So, and with that paperwork, our VSO has actually forwarded that to me as well, so that way I have a copy of what those worksheets look like, that any individuals that would come in, that may be going through that process, that we actually already know what the forms and, you know, what would be required to be filled in prior to, you know, an individual doing it.
Okay.
So.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, parks request to fill seasonal position.
So, we have the warm weather coming, which camping season is among us. Administration, along with the parks manager, are requesting to post and fill the seasonal positions. Currently, the seasonal positions to be posted are two clerical, one laborer, and one housekeeper. These positions were approved in 2024 calendar year at the rate of $16, or, I'm sorry, a range, of $16, $18 per hour. With the approved cost of living increase that was given in January 25, this will increase the range from $16.56 to $18.63 per hour. Currently, the housekeeper hours are around 29 hours per week, and the clerical and labor hours are 40 hours per week, up to 26 weeks for both, all three of those positions. I'm sorry, all four of those positions. New this year is the Earn Sick Time Act, where all employees will receive one hour of sick leave per 30 hours worked, too, so.
You know, I just saw something come through on that. There was some, like, 11th-hour change to the sick leave. I can't say what it is, but was there anything that would affect that?
No, it was, I think, to our small businesses.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to fill the seasonal positions. I, I, I would make a motion to fill the seasonal positions as presented.
No support.
Any just, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number eight, closed session collective bargaining agreement corrections. So, I need a motion to, go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining agreement with corrections under OMA section 15.268, section eight, subsection C.
Can I get a second?
Support.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jen Melner?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
I would just like to thank our Administrator and Commissioner Jensen for working on this along with Tony LaPlante and all of our Corrections Officers within the county.
Any more discussion?
And the Sheriff and Undersheriff, sorry.
Do we have a recall on this?
We can. Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Vankenhoven?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to number nine in the resignation of S. Weary, request for lump sum payout and to fill Park Manager position.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation of S. Weary, the lump sum payment, and offer a letter for his service.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there was no supporting documentation for this item. Do we have an end date or anything of that nature?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. It would be June 13th.
Are we going to look to do an overlap?
If the Commission wishes, yes, I would entertain that for sure. I would recommend it.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I would just like to thank Steve. I worked with him for a short period of time, starting in January. We've had some really good conversations. We've worked many, many hours together, and I appreciate the time that we have spent together. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I'd echo that. He's been a staple to the Conservation District for a while and to this county, so thank you for turning us into gold.
Thanks, Steve. Me and you've talked several times. We went to several parks and looked them over, and can't thank you enough for getting them up and running and profitable. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair, could I make a motion that we, how do we, how do I say this correctly, designate an overlap time so that we have time to train someone before Mr. Weary leaves? How do I say that?
I would say that we're posting the position, so once we fill the position, then we can decide that.
And I think also Finance is going to have to look at whether we can afford to overlap them or not, you know. I just think that there's probably some stuff we have to look at.
Between Finance and Personnel, they can make that up.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number 10, the resignation of C. Potter, request for lump sum payout and to fill Corrections position.
The motion with a thank you letter.
Support.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number 11 is going to be discussion only, and that is going to be the individual utility easement, correct?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of discuss the map and kind of the terms of the agreement, just to get a little bit of feedback on it. I know the, I want to say the Park Commission was working on it, so I would like to hear from the Park Commission on it and see what their opinions are.
So, I mean, you're looking right at me, so I will, I will just go ahead and take that. So, the easement, the original easement that we had looked at, I think about maybe a month ago, maybe more, had the barrel on the east side of the road going into the park, which was of concern because it's close to the water, it's close to Bark River, and so we had asked for it to be moved to the other side of the road going into the park. And of course, burying the line that comes in there right now overhead, so it would be burying that line. And I felt like, once it was moved to the other side of the road, we weren't going to have any real issues with erosion on the Bark River side of the, on the Bark River side of the road. And so I didn't have any issue with that, and it looks like that was moved in the new map. The only, and we didn't see the easement agreement previously. This, we just got the easement agreement today, tonight. And so I just read through it before we came in today, tonight, and number four is the only thing that has, that I have concerns with, that I would like us to address or talk about, and that is it's removing of trees and brush and, and its removing of trees and brush and vegetation. And my concern is, in the language of this easement, it gives UPCO 100% rights to do whatever they want. And for me, because this is a park, there's an aesthetic that we're going for, and there's also the river and any sort of erosion that we might create by removing, you know, large trees or vegetation along that riverbank. So I wasn't comfortable with number four. And I was going to suggest a fairly simple rewrite, but just stating that inside the park... Because outside the park along the road, not so concerning, you know? But inside the park, that the grantee would work with the grantor to control brush and trees within the easement area. The grantee would agree that the... That there's an importance of trees and shrubs to control Bark River's bank erosion, and there's an aesthetic to a park setting, so that the grantee would notify the grantor of any perceived need to remove vegetation and work with the grant... The grantee. So I would suggest some language change in number four. Other than that, I was fine with it.
I agree, I didn't like the totality of it either.
Yeah. There was one other added benefit when the request was... With it being on the other side of the road where we requested it now, they'll actually put the cabinets in, so like, near where the cabins and those areas are, that there would actually be the box, not the wayer to those, but that's the side where that wayer would run through.
I don't think they agreed to that.
Yep.
Did they? Okay.
When we talked to... And Steve was there, that was one of those that...
Okay. So they were just putting the actual physical box, but no connections, no...
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
But that part is already in, because it's easier to do that now in the construction phase.
Yeah, and that would allow us to add electric to the cabins and increase utilization.
But was that in... Was that in the actual easement, or how is that... How do we know that that's going on?
If I look at the map here, and that... This is one where it's going to take more time to study it. I think that's in... Let me see, I'm trying to find which map it's on. I don't know if it's on the third one.
I thought... It looks like the third one, but I just wanted to make sure I was reading that properly.
Yeah, it's the second or third. I have to look at that based on the other overlays we have. But it's going to be, yeah, either where it shows the box on the second one. Is it 3724, 27E6, I think is the one on the second map? And that's actually on the third map as well. It's near the top of it on the third map, and on the bottom is right where you get in that triangle area, so...
Yep.
But that was one of the things they said they would... They would put the box in, because now it's the time for them to do that.
They're just not going to make any connections for us, so, okay.
Correct, yeah, but the box will be there already.
Okay.
Would save money down the road if we decided.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. So I would suggest we maybe add a little bit... Modify some of the language and maybe add in that they're... Into the easement that those boxes are going to exist and...
Well, as long as they reference the maps and say...
Yeah.
They will follow according to what their maps say. That would be fine with that.
Any more discussion?
If you're going to, you should come up and go to the microphone.
Can we ask Mr. Weary to address the board?
Just so that the public outside the room can hear you.
There's only one other thing that you may want to look at that might not be on there. If you remember, it's a county road. It's not private anymore, and then generally, they've got jurisdiction from 30 feet from the center of the road to do any clearing or whatever they want. So just make sure you're aware of that, but I think you're already alluding to the fact of the brush, but see what kind of feedback that they give you on that.
Sounds great. I think in the... They're saying 20 feet. There's 20 feet, not 30, but I agree with you that we need to make it clear that you can't take, you know, the bank... You can't take away large trees from the bank of Bark River and then have us erode the road, you know? So we need to be cautious about that.
That's correct. The other thing that they did tell me when I met with them last is that even if they went along the river and anything did erode, they're 100% responsible to restore the power to the people, so it's whatever your pleasure is.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Are we... This is just going to be informational?
Yeah, and actually what I'll do is write up some of these changes that we've talked about and take it to... I'll send it to Ashley so she can have an updated easement agreement, and then we can... She can bring it back. She can take it to UPCO, I guess, and then bring it back here, so, okay.
Anything else? Okay. We will move on to general public comment.